It's really quiet, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish the fact that we have a quorum of our board team, we do have that, so I appreciate all of our board team members being here. Our next item, item two on our agenda is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Reverend John S. Pope, the pastor of Galilee Missionary Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
Let us all bow for a word of prayer. Father, we just come to you in the name of your son Jesus to give you all the praise and the glory and the honor. We thank you, dear heavenly father, for an opportunity to serve your community. We thank you, Lord God, for all of these who are gathered here, dear heavenly father, to lift their voice, to make the issues known, and to address the issues that are at hand. We want to pray, God, that you would just bless each and every one of these board members with wisdom. Each of them brings a unique talent and a gift to this particular board. We pray, Lord God, that you would allow those talents and gifts to gel together, dear heavenly father, that they may be able to not only examine issues, but to be able to come up with viable solutions that would be good for our children, for our schoolteachers, for the administrators, and for this system at large. Lord, we pray your Holy Spirit will be here tonight, and that you would bless as only you can. God, we give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise. Now let them work as one. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend, we appreciate that very much. Our next item is our pledges. We're honored this evening to have students from Lamar Elementary who are going to lead us in our pledges. Let me introduce them first. We have Sophia Stennett White and Katie Hamilton, Sunny Gattica, and Liam Allen. If y'all will stand, they're going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And parents, y'all can come up closer and take a picture if everybody will turn around where they can see you, okay? Y'all took some great pictures beforehand, but they might want to take some with a better backdrop behind them.
With y'all.
Yeah, well, you notice how quick everybody gets out of that part of the picture. And thank all the parents who got everybody out on a cold evening, we really appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, I always remind everybody that they're supposed to lead, that I'm not supposed to lead, so, you know, they did a great job. Sometimes we have to prompt, but it worked out perfect, so. Our next item, let me read our introductory script, and then we'll move forward on our agenda. Good evening and welcome. As president of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SEISD's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any public comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that our tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence their cellphones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. Item four I just referred to is anyone wishing to make public comments to our board team on items not on our agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda? I see no one coming forward to do so, so we'll move to item five. Item five is approval of a minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Dendel on a second for Mr. Parker to approve the minutes of our January 14, 2011 financing pre-agenda meeting and our 2000, excuse me, our January 21, 2019 regular board meeting. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our reports section. We have two reports this month. Our student enrollment report, which we get on a regular basis as part of our Friday facts. It's the 21st Monday of school, this was effective January the 28th, and we've been right around anywhere from 80 to 100 students, short of where we were last year, but really pretty steady enrollment throughout the year. And then the next item is our third six weeks average daily attendance report, and our attendance is actually lower compared to the same timeframe last year. I think it's, we talked about it a little bit at our pre-agenda meeting, I think one of the reasons is that we just have a little bit of a late flu season. Last year was earlier, and this year flu's kind of hit a little bit later, so it affected us a little bit more so in that timeframe. That covers those reports. We talked last week, and we do have some good news coming out of our partnership with Goodfell Air Force Base, but we don't have anything to report this evening, and then we have an update on academic progress, and Dr. Ritter's going to walk us through that.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, and members of the board. Tonight, we are going to be presenting from the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, the area of secondary curriculum and instruction. So we have our directors here, along with our director and our facilitators, our content facilitators for secondary education. Prior to that, we wanted to blend in just a conversation. Farah Gomez is going to join us as our executive director of schools, and talking about our campus turnaround plan for Lincoln Middle School, and as part of the response, because we'll be highlighting our areas of relative strength, and then our response to those areas of need as well for that campus. So Farah's going to come forward and present that, and then Shelley Huddleston, our director of secondary curriculum and instruction, is going to be following her with more detailed information about what we've been up to in secondary education. Thank you, Farah.
Thanks.
Well, good evening. As Dr. Ritter said, I'm going to give you guys an update. You all received a handout, it was paper clipped at your seats, so we'll go through these handouts. The first one is the long handout on the legal paper, and this is in a form that reads very easily, so to simplify our discussion, we've labeled the bottom of the pages, and we'll go through the pages with the various sections. That will be the first handout we review. So this campus turnaround plan for Lincoln Middle School was facilitated with David Bedford from Region 15. Mr. Bedford is our professional service provider, and he's also another acronym in education, what they refer to as the Effective School Framework Facilitator, as part of the campus improvement process. In conjunction with Mr. Bedford, the campus leadership team, which consisted of Ms. Kristi Diego, the campus principal, Ms. Catherine Rudolph, an instructional coach, Ms. Beth McAda, a counselor, Ms. Kimberly Morgan, special education teacher and special education department head, Ms. Tammy Hayes, English Language Arts teacher, and also the ELAR department head, and Ms. Eloisa Griffin, an English Language learner, student support teacher, compromised the CLT for Lincoln Middle School, and they worked directly to create this plan. I also worked with the campus as the executive director of school for Lincoln Middle School. So as part of this process, Mr. Bedford facilitated a data review and gap analysis. And you can see that on Section 1, in the middle of the paper, performance trends were evaluated from the campus for the past multiple years. From this data, four problem statements were created, and you can see those listed there. I won't read those all in their entirety, I just want to show you where they are in the plan, and give you a second to look those over. Then these identified problem statements led directly to the work in Section 2. So if you'll turn the page to where it says Section 2, the second step of the process included going through the diagnostic results, again facilitated by Mr. Bedford. So you can see at the very top there, those foundational essential actions, and then to the right, you see a diagnostic score. So for diagnostic purposes, there were specific indicators that had to be met with a scale of zero to four. Zero being the lowest score with no evidence, and four being the highest with transparency and consistency measures being met by all staff. From here, essential actions were developed for the plan. First, areas of relative strength were identified, and as you can see on the plan, the two identified areas of relative strength was curriculum and interim assessments aligned to TEACs with a year-long scope and sequence. And then if you'll flip to the back of that page, the second identified strength was the recruitment, selection, assignment, induction, and retention of highly qualified educators. Lincoln actually had the lowest amount of turnover with staff last year from the middle school campuses, with only three new English Language Arts teachers and only two new math teachers, so that's why the leadership team identified this as a strength. Then you'll also see below the areas for prioritized focused areas for improvement. Those were compelling and aligned vision, mission, goals, and values focused on a safe environment with high expectations, and objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. And moving to Section 3 in the process, the campus identifies an examination of alternatives to make improvements with student achievement. On the back page, and it's kind of microscopic, because this document does not print for very friendly, we have to submit it electronically to TEA, so it's kind of hard to read, but on the back page, we have to identify the school turnaround strategy that will be selected for the campus. The campus leadership team selected to improve foundational practices at the campus. The rationale for this turnaround strategy was the fact that Lincoln Middle School made considerable progress last year, due in large part to addressing the targeted elements and implementing district initiatives. In fact, if you remember, it was a change in the accountability system that actually forced the campus into school improvement, which came out two weeks prior to accountability. So they made great gains with everything had been implemented. So the campus elected to focus their efforts from last year in combination with additional targeted efforts from this year to continue improvement and acceptable student performance. And if you will flip to Page 4, and that one's almost next to impossible to read without a microscope, I apologize for that. The campus had to identify a short-term year-one goal. This short-term year-one goal would be implemented with the 2019-2020 school year if the campus did not meet requirements to come out of school improvement. And so the goals selected were to have values that include high expectations and shared ownership for student success. The leadership team and staff will demonstrate support for the school mission, vision, goals, and values. And then the district's contributions would be to provide a support for implementation of a management system that provides explicit behavioral expectations and provides a system for tracking data. The district would also provide best practice resources and tools for the campus to engage families. The district is currently doing this work and would continue to partner with the Region Service Center to develop behavioral expectations and a management system. Then the last section of the plan is Section 5, and you will see there's nothing indicated on Section 5 at this time. Because of the examination of the alternatives that was selected, there was no further action under Section 5 needed at this time. So once the plan is developed by the campus leadership team, the campus solicits further feedback from the Campus Decision Site-Based Committee. This was also posted on both the San Angelo ISD district website and the Lincoln Middle School website for stakeholder feedback. That's your second handout that you have in front of you. Those were posted on the websites back in December 20, 2018, before the Christmas holiday, and they were up for 30 days for stakeholder input. The trends from the stakeholder input included the desire for more parental involvement and to continue to hire quality staff. Some potential barriers indicated from the feedback included potential lack of interest for involvement and people being unwilling to change. And then the last document you have is a sample of a board resolution. This would come to you in the March meeting, so tonight, this is simply a draft, because as part of the resolution, as the Board of Trustees and Dr. Detloff, you would be saying that the campus leadership team has the knowledge, skills, and experience necessary to implement the plan as they have written, that if there is a change in a principle prior to or during the implementation of the plan, that the new principle would follow the plan as written, and that the school district worked with parents and community members to seek feedback in developing the plan. And this is the feedback that you have in handout 2, we would have this available on request if necessary. So again, it's simply a draft and would come to you for the March meeting. This evening, we just wanted to give you an opportunity to see the work that the campus leadership team has been very busy working on from the fall and through the current date, and many of these things, while they're not required, they're currently in practice because the campus feels these are necessary to improve student achievement on the campus. Do you all have any questions? I know that was a lot, just wanted to give you a general overview.
Questions for Ms. Gomez? Farah, on the community involvement piece, that all came from site-based, or it came from website at each campus, correct?
It came from the website feedback that was received. So that could have been from staff feedback or from community feedback that's not identified, that's who it was sent to.
Okay.
Farah, you did mention that one of the strengths with Lincoln...
Turn your mic on.
One of the strengths with Lincoln was that the teachers, that you had a real low turnaround, but then on this Lincoln turnaround improvement plan feedback, is that the higher, better teachers actually want to help the students.
And that was from the stakeholder input, so that could have come from...
That's what they were saying.
Yes.
Parents. And then they're refusing to teach non-English speaking students. How does that work, the, I guess it's ELL?
ELL.
ELL?
Yes.
When you're ELL certified, I guess, do you... Because if you have a non-Spanish speaking teacher trying to teach non-English speaking kids, how does that work?
Sometimes that does happen, but we are very purposeful and intentional when we assign schedules for students where they do have a teacher or a paraprofessional throughout the day that can help with the communication. At Lincoln, we have Ms. Griffin, who was part of this campus leadership team. She is bilingual, and she serves English Language learners all day long in the area of ELA. So again, that feedback could have come from community or staff.
Come from someone who's totally informed on what's going on on the campus, or someone who has suspicions of what's going on on campus. Okay. All right. Other questions? Thanks, Gerard. Any other questions for Ms. Gomez?
And you feel like you're getting good support from the campus as far as buy-in from this?
I think we continuously work to message the why behind all of our instructional practices. The key to this type of plan is it's not top-down. Teachers are part of the creation and implementation of the plan, which helps anytime you move a plan forward. So the teachers involved in this process, they have a wide circle of influence, they're skilled teachers themselves, they take on additional leadership roles from department heads, so the fact that they were part of the creation when they talk to their peers, that helps with buy-in and ownership from all staff.
Thanks, Dr. Kingman. Other questions for Ms. Gomez? Go ahead, Ms. Flynn.
Hi. On the one that talks about the recommendation for more parental involvement, and it says the suggested resources are community, school, involvement activities, and parent interaction. Have there already been some of those, and how is that working?
Absolutely. There have been multiple opportunities. One of the new parental involvement outreach was coffee with the counselors and an opportunity to create a smaller setting for parents to come in, maybe ask some of the questions or concerns that they're not always willing to open or to ask in a big group. We definitely have increased opportunity to continue to have more parents in. Currently, the reality is we get a great turnout when it's an extracurricular, and we would like to see that same turnout when it's more of an academic focus for the parent involvement. Also, along those lines, Lincoln has done an outreach with local agencies and included that as part of their open house offerings, so it's not just all school-based, but to see all the partnerships we have in the Concho Valley.
So far, we haven't stumped her yet. Any more questions?
I'll just say, Mr. Lehman and the board, that this is an ongoing process. We consider it really a process for, you know, improvement and just targeted efforts of the school district and the campus staff as well, working with all of us and your support as well, and appreciate that support. As we move forward and continue to get more input from our parents and staff through surveys and using tools that we have there, input from students as well and utilizing student voice, just so that we, it's a continuous process. Our team that you will hear from tonight as well, the things you're going to hear about tonight, these are all things that are happening on a daily basis out on the campuses, including Lincoln, but we wanted to put this together so that you could hear how the interventions and just through regular instruction and just what we are doing every day also is helping us to focus on these areas of improvement.
Shelley and the CNI team are up next to talk further. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So this is a good segue into this next section, because what we want to talk to you about tonight are just some things that we've put in place district-wide to help with our struggling students, but to help with the kids who are doing well as well, just to kind of pull the string with everyone. So I want to take this opportunity to just talk to you about some of these initiatives. And first, I want to introduce you to this awesome team, because this is one of the great things that we've been able to do this year, is to bring Matt and Michelle on board to work together with me on our secondary campuses. So this is Matt Esquie. Matt was a teacher at Central High School and has come on board to work with our STEM, our math, and our science departments. And then this is Michelle Castro. Michelle was one of our instructional coaches, and she's working with our humanities, with our ELA and our social studies. So there's so much that we could talk to you about, the over 250 secondary courses that we offer, there's so many things that we could talk about in terms of great things happening at the West Texas Training Center or our Advanced Academics, our dual credit, but we're going to speak specifically about some district-wide initiatives that you guys have helped provide for us in moving the work forward, especially in math and in ELA. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to talk to you for a minute about our math initiatives.
Okay, good evening. Math Solutions has kind of been discussed when elementary presented, so I'm going to kind of give you a quick overview of how it's being applied to our secondary campuses. As a reminder, Math Solutions is a company that is one of the nation leading... try that again. Math Solutions is one of the leading research-based math instructional best practices company in the nation. Math Solutions offers support through professional development, teacher coaching, and instructional resources. This year, with Math Solutions, we have conducted three professional development days with our high school and our middle schools, and they are currently providing teacher coaching at all three of our middle schools. Okay, one of the best instructional practices that we're currently implementing is talk moves. Talk moves allow students to make connections to prior learning and the opportunity to explain and justify their thinking. As we go through and implement all of these new strategies onto our campuses, our instructional coaches have been instrumental in allowing us to do this, and this is Brandy Woods at Glenn Middle School, talking about the impact Math Solutions has made on her campus.
Hi, I'm Brandy Woods. I'm the instructor at Glenn Middle School. Math Solutions has been an amazing asset to Glenn. Math Solutions has been a great tool for our teachers to reinvent, turn their tired basic teaching around. They have brought amazing training to us, and then go right to the room and model it, and then watch the teacher do it and give feedback. Through their dedicated coaching, they have helped mentor our teachers into different ways of thinking about teaching math. No longer is a focus on spitting out as much information as possible and hoping something sticks in the student's head, rather really understanding the topics and units and providing a comfortable atmosphere where everyone is a part of the teaching process, teachers and students. Math Solutions has provided us with resources and tools to better our students' understanding of the inner workings of mathematics. They are helping our teachers teach students to talk about math and have in-depth conversations on math topics. We look forward to having Math Solutions on our campus more to help our teachers and students grow in more in-depth understanding of math topics.
Okay, and a lot of our talking so far has been about the impact it's made with our teachers, but Math Solutions also helps our students to become more collaborative, better communicators, deeper critical thinkers, and creators. Basically, it helps develop students into what we believe is a district they should be when they graduate. And now this is Michelle Castro, and she's going to talk about the English Language Arts.
Good evening. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the secondary literacy initiatives. We have the literacy extension class, also called the comprehension club. We created this class because in elementary school, we saw that students were receiving from anywhere from 90 to 120 minutes of ELAR instruction, but when they came up to the middle school, it dropped down to 50 minutes. So we saw a need and pulled in comprehension clubs. So now with the implementation of this literacy extension class, our sixth graders in middle schools are receiving about 110 minutes of ELAR. We have also implemented independent reading in our middle schools, and we have placed an emphasis on high-quality writing in middle and high school. Okay, so a little about the comprehension clubs. It's a program, it comes with themed units of study organized in a spiral curriculum. It includes a collection of books that allows for in-depth text-based conversations about readings and global ideas. It provides students with the opportunities to engage with text and talk and write about text in both interactive read-alouds and with book club sessions. So as you can see in the pictures, that's what the students are doing. They usually get to sit around a table, they choose a book to sit in a book club, and then they're able to work with their teacher and some scholastic coaches with that. We were able to do a district comprehension club healsee, so this is an example of all the teachers from the three middle schools getting to meet and collaborate to plan for comprehension club units. Our teachers have been very excited to launch this new course. This is an example of our scholastic, one of our scholastic coaches in the middle school. They work side-by-side with the teacher, modeling a small group lesson. Scholastic literacy specialists are on all our middle school campuses, once a month, working with our comprehension club teachers, and also supporting our independent reading with our ELA teachers. Our teachers report that the one-on-one coaching is among the most powerful professional learning they have ever been a part of.
And so I'm going to take back over here and talk just a little bit about the independent reading training that we're doing, because research tells us that independent reading has an enormous... because research tells us that independent reading has an enormous impact on student success. And independent reading is different than maybe the old model of stop, drop, and read. It's a highly interactive endeavor that our teachers are doing with students where they confer with them continually about their reading, they're asking probing questions and critical thinking questions. And so this slide shows you some of our middle school teachers receiving professional development around independent reading, again, from our partnership with Scholastic. And the research is also clear that what students really need is choice when they read. What I like, one of my favorite analogies is that literature is both a window and a mirror, that we need our kids to have the opportunity to have literature that lets them see the world, especially our students in poverty, many of whom don't ever leave San Angelo or the state of Texas. They need a way, a window to see the world. But we also know that literature needs to be a mirror, and often the literature that we have had in our schools is not very reflective of our students, either socially, ethnically. And so we have worked really hard to expand our reading libraries so that kids can choose books that reflect them. So that's been an important part of the socio-emotional learning that we've done. And so, again, this is just some training we've had. Not having kids just randomly go to a library, but actually helping teach them, you know, what are you interested in? What kind of book do you want? And then providing those books in the classrooms. So now in every one of our middle school ELA classrooms, they have a classroom library of their own. We're working to continually expand that library because we want them to have good access to all the reading materials that they can absorb. And we're providing structured time within the ELA classes for them to read and to confer with their teachers. We have also embarked on a writing training. Our English 1 and 2 teachers, along with our eighth-grade teachers, have worked extensively this year on writing. The English 1 and 2 EOC course, and the... I mean, the English 1 and 2 EOC test moves from strictly only reading to a heavily involved writing portion. And our students have struggled historically on the EOC test. So we are concentrating very heavily on writing, trying to use better strategies to integrate writing into our literature. And so we have been working for the last three years with a consultant, Tracy Scrovan. And another very... Just a really good, helpful thing that's happened this year is that we have now partnered with Angie Pidgen from Central High School. She was one of our outstanding ELA teachers at Central, and she is now leading the district as a high school instructional coach to work specifically with our high school English teachers. So in this next slide right here, this is a picture of Angie with Tracy Scrovan, and they are at Lakeview right now. But they're working with the English 1 and 2 teachers to plan lessons together. They have also spent time in onsite coaching at Central Freshmen, again, working with those English 1 teachers there, coaching them on these six traits of writing and how to sharpen their writing skills. The Central High School teachers have also been involved in the training, but not the onsite coaching, but we will... We have plans in our long-term plans to expand that to them next year. So quickly, just how are we measuring progress? We're doing a lot of progress measuring. We're collecting student data. We've got Michelle and Matt, who are on campuses daily, walking classrooms, walking with the instructional coaches, gathering data. I am on campuses quite often. Farah and I have done many classroom walks at the middle schools. And we're not just walking into classrooms, but we are collecting data. We have Google Spreadsheets that we are collecting data on our phone. And all of the data that we collect is linked to the initiatives. So if we go into a math class, there are certain talk moves that we're looking for. And so we're recording that data directly into a spreadsheet. And then the principals have real-time data about what we're seeing. And we're doing that in math. We're doing that in ELA. We're doing it in science and in social studies. All of our core classes, we're collecting that data. And then we also have had the privilege to have outside consultants who are coming in, who affirm the things that we're seeing and also who are giving us some regular data reflections. We will be meeting with our Math Solutions people again next week. They're coming in and bringing in mid-year data. Their reports are very comprehensive and have given us a lot of information. So lastly, just quickly to talk about map data. This is something that you've heard a little bit about. So we have our map testing window for the middle of the year is going on right now at our middle school, so we have some data. But we're collecting data in reading, math, and in science on our middle school levels this year. And we are seeing some real progress in some places with maps. So we think that's going to be another exciting tool. We're just getting started with it, but we know that's going to be something that's going to help us. So overall, I would say that some of the results we are seeing, we are seeing training and resources that the teachers are growing more and more confident in. We're seeing tier-one instruction overall, just being strengthened. Their practice, the lessons are more engaging. And we are showing that students are making some gains in reading and in math. So we're happy with the consistency we're seeing across the district, and we look forward to just continuing these initiatives that we've started. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Huddleston or her team? Ms. Castro or Mr. Eske? Yeah, go ahead.
Are you up, Dr. Kingman? Well, first, Shelley, you know, I've had the benefit of seeing you, Michelle, and Matt in classrooms in your previous experience, and you all are all masterful in your craft. And you're taking that pedagogy to our classrooms and really spreading that guidance across our district. And so that is... I'm just so appreciative of those efforts, and that is so helpful to students in making academic progress for our kids. I do want to highlight that really, our board, you know, was forecasting support three years ago in the... Really, the... Started the initiative of creating a curriculum and instruction department. So I want to thank our board for the guidance there and the reallocation of resources that we are utilizing. You've seen that, the measurement of academic progress that you mentioned tonight, the Math Solutions embedded coaching, Scholastic embedded coaching. And I want to highlight, earlier in the evening, you heard from our Lamar students. Lamar was really the pilot for many of these initiatives, and they have proven through 82% gains in student reading levels that these initiatives work. And so under Dr. Ritter and our curriculum instruction department, and Matt Kimball in professional development, Shelley Holland, and Jeff has said yes for the dollars under our board's guidance, we've implemented these initiatives, and we are showing strong academic gains across the board. So we carried it from Lamar, implemented across 17 elementary schools, and now through our middle schools as well. So I think we're seeing the fruits of that labor, you know, come to us, and I'm just so appreciative of the work all of you are doing to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kingman?
I just had a question just for stakeholders in general. Like, how are we doing instructional coaching? How is that actually... Is every teacher getting that? How are we targeting that?
Okay.
Just kind of explain that to... I mean, we all kind of know, but just explain that maybe to the audience, how that actually is being done, so that they know.
Sure. So at the three middle schools, we are doing side-by-side coaching in math and in ELA, and so that's every math teacher... Every middle school math teacher. Every middle school math teacher. And every middle school... You can hear me, but just... And every middle school ELA teacher. So they all are getting coaching? Okay. They all are getting coaching. And then we have also targeted certain teachers, especially our newer teachers who have less experience. They may get more coaching sessions or extended coaching sessions. So they're having the ability to affect every one of those middle school math and ELA teachers. But we're also customizing the support based on what we think those teachers need.
Just as a clarification, and we're also providing our own people the information, not just the people we brought in from outside, so that we can implement that ourselves.
Exactly. And one of the things that we're doing is we're very purposeful, that our instructional coaches are sitting with those specialists that we're bringing from outside, and Matt and Michelle as well, to listen in, to gain from what they're doing. Because obviously, we're trying to replicate that. We need to grow our own. And for sustainability, they can't always stay in, so we're being very purposeful. One of the things that we've also done in Lincoln is to highlight a couple of lead teachers who we feel are very strong teachers. And they're also sitting in on some of those extra coaching sessions, not to help them in their practices, much as for them to learn how to help the other teachers there.
Ms. Huddleston, I assume when you say all English Language Arts, all math teachers are getting this assistant, are all our students in English Language Arts and math getting... Are they all participating in this?
Yes. Yes. So in the middle schools, those core classes, all of those students are in those core classes. And even within some of our special education teachers, they have been part of these sessions too. So we're making sure that we're hitting all of the kids on those middle school levels.
And Shelley, when we do our training, specific training for teachers, it's... They don't get to choose much training anymore. We dictate where they go to. Dictate's a poor word. But we tell them where to go for training, so it's very specialized training.
That's correct. So our district PD plan that was for last Friday, it's a spreadsheet about four pages long, and it specifies where each group will go and what kind of training they will get, and it's very specific to their needs. We try to listen to the things that they're, you know, saying that they need help with. But also, we're setting that based on the things that we know we want to move forward with them.
I'll say to that, Mr. Lehman as well, I've never seen the level of customization that we now have. I think all of us can agree with that. Going around to all of the different areas where we had professional learning going on for our teachers on Friday, it was just very exciting and so empowering for them. And we're hearing back from teachers that they feel it's very... Oh, it's user-friendly. We are really listening to them, customizing for their needs, and they're working together interactively. Our instructional coaches lead those, our principals, our assistant principals, all of our curriculum staff. And then we also will host, like in this room, we had certain levels of like elementary math teachers with the Math Solutions coach, who came and worked with us, like three through five, grades three through five math teachers. But they're in together, all of them together, and so they're collaborating and working together, learning from each other. Then that also gives them a network of people to refer to and talk to. They're going to each other's campuses even and observing these model lessons with groups of students. So it's no longer just stop and do all of it in the summer. It's embedded into the practice and utilized with students so that we can see how it really is best making a difference for our kids.
And again, that speaks to that whole growing our own too, because so many of these sessions are being led by teacher leaders who have received training themselves. So we're just continuing to grow that coaching model within as well.
Great. Any other...
How are the kids reacting to it? Are they enjoying it?
You know, they are. And one of the things when we started this independent reading, because you know you're always going to have kids, "Oh, I don't like to read." But the fact that they're having student choice, it truly is taking off. And in fact, part of the feedback we're getting is that when that... Because we're starting with 10 minutes, 10 minutes a day. When that 10 minutes is over and the teacher's ready to begin his or her mini lesson, some of the kids are saying, "Ah, no, we don't want to put up our book." And that's a great problem to have. So it seems to be going really well. And there's just a spirit of literacy among all of our middle schools as well that I think is really exciting. Teachers are beginning to post things outside their classrooms about, "Hey, this is the book I'm reading. This is the book I'm reading," so that the students are seeing that literacy is for everyone, which I think is really important. So that's what we're trying to do with all of us.
And real quick, just... I'm proud of the work y'all have done. I know three years ago, when y'all came to us and recognized the literacy and comprehension that problems some of the kids were having, it just, you know... I've always been a believer that the greatest invention ever made was the book. I mean, you have to learn how to read and comprehend, and math is just as important. And I think we're... Was it future-ready learners that we were building? You know, that struck a chord with me because you have to have these kids... Not every... You know, kids are going to go their own way when they get older. But as long as we prepare them and get them ready for the world to look at something, pick up a paper or something where they go to work, where they get a job, and they're able to comprehend what's needed of them and what's required of them and all that, you know, that's what I love, is that we're getting them ready for that. And it's getting the competitions a lot... I don't want to use it. It's a lot tougher now. I mean, the job market is just crazy out there, and things are just moving so fast. And I'm so glad that we're moving forward to getting these kids ready to go out there and meet that challenge with all this we're doing. So thank you for all y'all's work.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate y'all being here and all y'all's hard work. I know it sounds easy, but it's really a lot of hard work. We appreciate that. And I think the question for, obviously, as a board team, for Dr. Ritter and for Dr. Detloff is, you know, where are we headed next? And what kind of help and assistance do you need from our board team as far as funding and anything else that you might need from us? So that would be something that we need to work towards before we do any budgeting or anything like that for next year.
Absolutely. I will say that our team met last week. We spent half a day on a Friday up here doing truly storyboards of literacy storyboards for math and the other content areas, really looking at five years from now, our optimal, what do we really... Where do we want to be? And we step back and say, where are we now at its current state? How do we get to this level and what we have to do to get there? And so you have the short-term goals and you have the longer-term goals, but we have to think very clearly about what we need for next year immediately because that budget process is already happening right now. We're already talking to, you know, how we're going to use Math Solutions and Scholastic. But I love this about these consultant groups. Their goal is not to remain forever in your district. Their goal is to truly empower your district and your people to lead this forward. So we know that we have another heavy year, and every year we'll continue to move forward. We're doing more with high schools next year. Math Solutions has been in our high schools this year. We'll be working with more of the literacy and working with our writing and everything with high schools as well, so that we're doing pre-K through 12th grade, really a very intensive strategic focus on what we need to accomplish and how we need to get there. So we will be providing you with a plan for that and looking at the five-year, the three-year, and then the one-year plan for all of that.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. I appreciate that. So we really appreciate the team, and I think it's also a great opportunity for me to recognize Matt Eske for, you know, our cheerleading, which through the years, I've been pretty close to because I had a couple of daughters that were involved in that and also a wife that was relatively involved. But Matt and our cheerleaders at Central High School just won national championship, and Matt's their coach, you know, so congratulations. And for those of you who don't know, you know, cheerleading is a UIL sport now, so it's not something that, you know, just... It definitely is a sport. Okay, let's move forward to item seven. Item seven on our agenda is for our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve our consent items?
Move to approve consent items A through D.
We have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second for Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items. Those are to consider donations to the district. Those are listed on our overhead. We appreciate folks who are supporting the district through donations. Item B is to consider depository contract extension for First Financial Bank from September 1st of 2019 to August 31st of 2021. Item C is to consider bids for Child Nutrition Department for 2018-2019 school year. And item D is to consider recommendations for personnel, although I didn't see any. Did we have any... Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. We do have some. Any questions about any of those? And as I mentioned earlier in my comments, these are all items that we previously discussed at a bridge in the board workshop. Any other questions or comments concerning our consent items or anyone wishing to remove one of those items for further discussion? one of those items for further discussion? If not, is there any public comment? Okay, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item eight, to consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for January of 2019.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of January 2019. Do we have any board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, just to note to the public that all of the reports were approved, were, excuse me, were reviewed earlier in our pre-agenda meeting, and all these reports, all the way down to our checkbook, can be found online at our website, seisc.org.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of January? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider the proposed amendments to the district's official budget, and this is in our Food Service Fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Parker to approve the amendment to our district's official food service budget. Do we have any comments or questions concerning that?
Just a few items being purchased by the Food Service Department, some serving lines and some ovens for some needed repairs on some campuses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dindel. This is for approval of an increase in expenditures of $133,300. Any questions or comments concerning that, further comments? Any public comment? Not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Motion passes. Our next item is to consider Contra Valley Council of Governments Head Start and Early Head Start Community Assessment, and Ms. Taunton's here to help us with that. Thanks, Rachel, for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. It is time for the community assessment that was conducted in October of this school year. This is a full assessment year, so we send out surveys to parents, to community agencies that serve, the families that we serve, and to daycares. We took the information, I worked with Contra Valley Council of Governments in coming up with the community assessment. It was a joint effort. After this year, after the full assessment, the community assessment is updated every year, just to reflect any changes that might be happening in the community and with community agencies in the area. This is the result of the community assessment that was conducted. We shared information from all the surveys. We also included information from our program information report that we do at the end of the year. We did, we looked at the community assessment and the self-assessment from the previous year to see if we had met our goals. The information here was information that was required to be in the community assessment. And then at the very end, it also shows the, the Contra Valley Council of Governments came up with the strategic plan that is effective from 2019 to 2024. So these are the goals and objectives that they plan on working on for the next five years. Have any questions on the information?
Any questions for Ms. Taunton? Go ahead, Gerard.
And really, what got my attention was when, I guess sometime this week we saw that, because I noticed the Salvation Army was on here for like shelter. How is that closing going to affect a lot of these families?
It's just a resource. We have an MOU with them. We've always had one. If there's families that are homeless that come into our program or that need assistance with anything, you know, that was an area that, or a place that we would refer them to, but...
Yeah, because they have them down for food and nutrition also. I guess a lot of people eat there as well, so...
Right.
Okay.
That's a good question, Gerard. I think there's people, you know, city members and a number of other nonprofits and stuff that are trying to help alleviate the need that will exist once, that certainly, we probably have a need anyway, but we have a greater need now because of, you know, what's going on at the Salvation Army, so...
And I sit on the Tongren County Hunger Coalition, and that was one of the things that they talked about, several agencies. There are several agencies in town that provide lunch, but the Salvation Army was the only one that provided dinner. And so they were looking at options of maybe alternating and, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one of them do a lunch and things like that. So there's lots of talk going on about ways that they can help with that situation.
Any other questions or comments concerning our strategic plan? Excuse me, our community, our Head Start Community Assessment. Do we have a motion to approve? I make a motion that we approve our...
That's what I was going to read it.
The official language. Yeah, what page is the official language on 75? That we approve the Contra Valley COG Head Start and Early Head Start Community Assessment, which includes information from SAISD Head Start and Early Head Start in the community. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any other comment or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider superintendent evaluation, contract, and salary. We, as a board team, work on that individually, and then we collectively evaluate. Dr. Detloff, we will begin working on that, actually some this evening, making sure that we get all the materials that our administrative team provides for us, and then we'll do individual evaluations and then compile those and move forward. We actually do a couple of evaluations of Dr. Detloff a year. This is the one that's required by the state, so we will try to make sure that we complete that as we should. So we'll work on that, and then we'll probably have an announcement, or most likely have an announcement in March. But we don't have anything to report really on his evaluation contract or salary as of this, at this particular time. I think we are going to go into...
Good.
Okay, all right. Why don't we do that? We're going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551074, which is personnel. We're allowed to do that. I don't think we have any other business to cover in our closed session, and then we'll come out after that. As far as announcements are concerned, our community-based accountability framework training is March 18th. That's with John...
Tanner.
Yeah, I always want to say, I always want to say Dr. Tanner, but it's not, you know, it's John Tanner, so that's on March 18th. So we need to make sure we have that on our calendars. Our financing bridge into workshop is a little late in March as a result of spring break, so we'll have our financing bridge into workshop on March 18th, and then we'll have our regular board meeting scheduled March 25th. Is there any other thing, any other activity or things that we need to do as a board team this evening, or any suggestions on future items that we need to place on our agenda? If not, we're going to go into closed session. Again, we're allowed to do, go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551074 to discuss personnel. So we are back. We appreciate everyone's patience. We're back in open session, and we don't have anything to report that happened in closed session, and certainly no votes or official board action. We do have one final announcement, I think, that Jennifer wanted to make for us, so if we'll take time to do that, that would be great. Ms. Crutchfield.
Where do you want me to stand? Right here? Okay. So I have learned a lot of new things down in the communications department, and one of the things I've learned about is an organization called TISPR, which is the Texas School Public Relations Association, which is the professional organizations that folks in communication belong to. They're having their conference this week, and they are recognizing outstanding video submissions, media submissions. I don't know all the ins and outs, because like I said, I'm new to this gig and learning all about it. But we learned today, today, that our very own Jack Wilcox will be recognized by his peers with a gold medal. There were gold, silver, bronze, gold star too, for a video that he submitted. I don't know if y'all saw it on our webpage or social media, the Sip 'em Cats video. And Jack wrote the story, did all the media, did everything, and always does such a great job. And so now he's statewide famous, not just San Angelo famous, because we all know what a great job he does and what great work he does. And so I wanted y'all to know about that good news and invite you to join me in wishing him well tomorrow and let him know how proud we are of him.
Is that video online that we could, you could announce where our listeners could find it, as well as the board members?
It is. It's on our YouTube channel, and we'll probably do a little story about it when I get back with the award, and we'll link to it for sure.
All right.
And Dr. Bright is going to be there for the awards ceremony tomorrow evening as well to represent our district.
Congratulations, Jack.
Thank you.
And certainly, just as Ms. Crutchfield said, that it's awesome that people are recognizing your efforts outside of our district, because we know what you mean to us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Get in there, Jack. Right there.
Let's...
Come on, Jeff.
And certainly here, no objection, we'll stand adjourned.